Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. We begin with our city council meeting, and I ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Casaroff.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Patchkey.
Here.
Swinson.
Here.
We always begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight it is my high honor to recognize a young lady who is celebrating her birthday this evening, the one and only Alder Person Anise Bowring. Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Alder Person Bowring. Happy birthday. I know this is exactly how you wanted to spend your birthday, so...
They'll be cake there, right?
Yes, courtesy of St. Charles. There'll be some... We have to go north of the border to get the cake. Item 3A, folks, is to proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2024 as Red Ribbon Week in Geneva. I would like to entertain a motion to so do, or do so, excuse me. Motion by Casaroff, seconded by Bowring, and we have some very special guests with us this evening. Ms. Meister, are you going to do the introductions, or...
Sure.
Welcome back. Good to see you again.
Thank you for having us. My name is Lisa Meister, and I am one of the co-sponsors for the SAD Club at Geneva High School, along with Ashley and Ashadi. SAD Club stands for Students Against Destructive Decisions, and we have an active group this year that wanted to come and share some of the different community endeavors that they're doing this year for Red Ribbon Week and what Red Ribbon Week really means to them. So we have Molly and Lauren that are here to speak with you guys tonight. Come on up, guys.
Molly and Lauren, welcome. And after your presentation, we're going to have some conversations. Is that fair?
Yes.
Excellent.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Like Ms. Meister said, my name is Molly Gaston.
And I'm Lauren Whisling.
And we are so excited to talk with you guys tonight. We'd like to thank you guys for your time at this meeting to recognize and talk about the importance of Red Ribbon Week. The nation celebrates this week each year to send a message to the community about taking responsibility for your health and making thoughtful decisions regarding substance abuse. In the past, the main message that was shared by substance abuse and drug prevention programs was "Just Say No" or various fear tactics. However, as psychological research has developed and advanced, we look around at the actual human beings affected by drug abuse, and we see that those strategies have been extremely ineffective. For some teens, developing refusal skills and how to analyze the influences around them is a useful life skill, but that does not work for others, for majority, actually. And for these teens, a strictly "Just Say No" approach isn't as helpful as talking to them about harm reduction methods and providing them with people and resources that they can talk to. If our goal is to help teens and young adults make decisions towards healthier outcomes, then we must understand and recognize that each person is in a different starting place, and we need to approach this topic with a genuine hope to understand the issue and have empathy and compassion rather than judgment.
We need to meet teens where they are and talk about things relevant to their lives using evidence-based strategies. Otherwise, teens won't feel like they are understood or heard by adults in their life, and they will not feel comfortable talking with adults about the concerns that they may have about themselves or with their friends. We need to help teens who want to take steps forward toward positive changes in their lives, even if those changes are small steps at first. In drug prevention, we don't want to deliver a permissive message because that is ineffective. However, we also don't want to be dismissive of harm reduction strategies that are evidence-based. The National Drug Control Strategy outlines the need for various tactics in drug education. A school district in Washington State described their strategy as "a right service, right time, for the right child" approach, explaining that sometimes taking smaller steps toward a healthier outcome will help students build trust and report with their adults and community to be able to help them when they are ready to make a bigger and more lasting changes. Trust is not a simple concept, but rather is a long-term process. The major principles of harm reduction include care, support, connection, and respect to foster that trust and report needed for someone to reach out for assistance.
Something that was really important to us is Red Ribbon Week that Mayor Burns mentioned before. That's what the little pins are for. But this week's theme, or this year's theme for this week, is "Life is a Movie: Film Drug-Free." To me, this means that we want to have clear memories of our most special moments in life, specifically regarding high school special moments we might be talking about, first dates, or football games, school dances, or celebrating really important milestones like graduation. And in this, we want to be able to remember these moments. We don't want to cloud them with substances that steal our ability to remember these moments and also change the way we act. Statistics show that teens are more involved with their community and have a sense of belonging and stability, are less likely to engage in risky behaviors. In trying to make an impactful campaign with students, we highlight the six principles that help facilitate a healthy lifestyle. These principles are, number one, finding a natural high that is your passion. This kind of just means finding something that's important to you, that makes you feel joyful and more like yourself. Number two is surrounding yourself with positive peer influences and people to lift you up and help you to become a better version of yourself. Number three is similar. It's finding a positive mentor to encourage you and someone to look up to, someone to be able to talk to and gain knowledge from. Number four is having a firm belief in who you are. This means like your talents and your abilities and just being confident in who you are as a person. Number five is setting goals for your future and just having something to look forward to, something to have hope in. And then lastly, number six is building resilience to get you through these tough challenges in life that are bound to happen. At the high school level, we are helping students to build assets where they want to give back to the community with services like our annual food drive that we have during Red Ribbon Week. We are also working with our Geneva Television students, or our GTV students, to promote healthy decision-making and being brave and standing up to peer pressure, which really just means like spreading awareness about drug abuse and substance abuse and how individuals have been affected and letting students have the chance to share their voice, whether they want to do that anonymously or by sharing their story publicly. We want to give them that space to feel comfortable. We are also encouraging more connections between clubs at school to improve and increase positive social networks among teens and positive mentors, and this ensures that everyone has a safe and comfortable space to connect and grow and become better versions of themselves.
As a community, we can make an impact by providing fun and healthy things to do throughout our partnership programs, our city planning, and our school district extracurricular plans so that teens can choose to participate in safe and fun activities that they're actually excited for. We aim to these activities to be fun, accessible, to participate with their friends, while also allowing for adult participation and guidance. Parents should encourage conversation about healthy decision-making under pressure with your own families and encourage an open dialogue with your kids. Talk often in your homes about what your kids can do if they're worried about a friend or if they need some advice to go handle a situation. Teens often feel like they can't go to their parents on these topics because they're concerned that their parents will have an alarming reaction of fear, and their parents will put them kind of in a bubble and lock them down and kind of not let them go anywhere. As parents, teens need to, as parents, your teens need to know that they can approach you and ask questions so that when heavy stuff does come up, they know that they have someone that they are comfortable with to turn to. They already have established rapport and dialogue going. This is vital because then teens are trying to handle life and death situations on their own without help.
These are some of the many ways that adults and teens can work together to get a handle on reducing harm and increasing discussions. We just want to thank you all for your time and attention to this important annual week of drug prevention and awareness, and we welcome any questions that you may have for us.
Fantastic. Thank you again very, very much for being here.
Thank you.
Are these new shirts this year?
No, they are not.
They're not?
These are our classic shirts, yep.
Define "classic."
We've had them in our closet. We have extras if you want some.
That is the definition of "classic," isn't it? I like that.
Vintage.
Vintage, yes, that's the better word. I'd like to open it up to the dais first to our Alder Persons. Alder Person Ruby.
Thank you so much. I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you both for being such courageous, awesome, leading by example for your peers and sharing your message, and I feel like at the heart of your message was, "We need to talk. We need to have communications." It's like, ooh. It's such a basic thing, but it's so often overlooked. So thank you for highlighting that, and thank you for setting such a great example.
Thank you so much.
Well said. Anyone else? Yes, Alder Person Patchkey.
I also wanted to thank you guys. I was really impressed with the message that you shared with us tonight. I think that's incredible that you guys are spending your time understanding something so nuanced and deep and important that really affects our society in big ways. So I applaud you guys, and your mentors, and your parents, obviously have all done a good job working with you. I appreciate what you're doing and your messaging. I've worked in a harm reduction sphere before, and I know there's a statistic, I believe it's that people who are met with harm reduction are five times more likely to enter treatment eventually because of the trust that you talked about, and it's really important for the community to start to understand something that might not make sense at first glance. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to understand that and help us understand better. Thank you.
Alder Person Bowring.
I'd like to thank you as well. I think you gave a really thoughtful, really insightful presentation, and I have to say, I wish that this messaging had been more prevalent when I was a teen. I think it would have helped me and my peers, so I just really want to thank you and applaud your work.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Okay, Lauren, Molly, share with all of us your year in school.
This year?
No, 10 years ago. Yes, this year.
Well, I think as, we're both seniors at Geneva High School, and I think that as seniors, we're faced with a lot of amazing events that our school has, like a lot of beautiful opportunities. Homecoming Week just passed, and there's a lot going on with that, and I think something that we've both been working through together in SAD Club and having our great mentors is just balancing our time and knowing when to do what, when to focus on our studies, when to be there for the club and put effort into that, and when to have time with our friends and our family. And I think that having mentors like Ms. Meister and Ms. Day has helped us to learn about this, because we wouldn't know as much as we do without them and without their club and helping us with that. So they've definitely helped us with our own decision-making and learning about these issues, as well as our parents.
That's wonderful.
But yeah, our school year has been very busy, but it's something to be grateful for.
Yeah, for sure. I don't think Molly could have said that any better. I completely agree with everything, and kind of going back to what we've been doing at school, like as she said, recently it was our homecoming week, and our school did a great job of just letting us know that we have opportunities to be safe and be in a safe community and participate in different ways at the school. And we even had a win day on one of the days, which is a "What I Need" day, which is something that they've implemented recently.
I saw that on Instagram. It was very cool.
Yeah, and we both did yoga. It was very relaxing. And yeah, and I just thought it's just an amazing thing that we have done so far for the school.
Wow. Will you be leading us in yoga tonight?
I might have to.
Maybe. Maybe if there's time at the end.
Yeah, understood.
After the cake.
What a nice plug. Look at that. I'm going to pick out two words you said earlier this evening. Hopefully, you'll elaborate. I believe it was Lauren that said "the heavy stuff."
Yeah.
What is "heavy stuff"?
Yeah, I think especially as teenagers, I know me and Molly can both agree, stuff being friends and schoolwork, whoever said senior year was easy, lied. It's tough. And so I think just being in these different circumstances where we fall into with social media and things like that, and then these just norms that are so heavy and everything that we consume, it's just mentally, it's very heavily weighted on us. And so I think when it comes to all that, and it's not really talked about in a lot of circumstances, so bringing it up alone is a very important step to take. And so, yeah, so that is, do you have anything else to say?
Yeah, I think building onto that, it's a very broad statement, like hard stuff. It's just kind of what you go through, the challenges that you face that affect you, each person differently. I think losing people is something like with passing away or just growing distance, something that's very challenging and something that a lot of people struggle with, because it's something we just don't, can't understand. So that's something that definitely stuck out to me when I was reading through that and talking through it. But yeah, I think Lauren hit it on the dot there. Just something that affects you personally in any way challenging that you just, you can't do alone, and you're not made to do alone. So having a community is something that we want to focus on, building each other up.
I'm going to throw this question out, understanding that it's not complicated but sometimes complex.
Yeah.
When you turn to a peer, a positive peer, as you referenced, or you turn to someone, particularly in your peer group, do you first communicate verbally, or do you communicate via text, DM, or otherwise?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um...
We're both the same, I think. Yeah, I think definitely verbally.
Oh, you do? Okay, good.
Yeah, for sure. I don't know, I think me and Molly are the same in that way, but I know a lot of other, of our peers do communicate through the messaging and texting and Snapchatting.
And sometimes that's good too, right?
Yeah, true, true. So I think for us specifically, we definitely do, would rather talk about it in person, whether that's addressing the issue at hand or being like, oh, we had a hard day, you know, et cetera, so yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anything can beat like the personal connection with someone.
Right.
It's just not the same over the phone. But that being said, I do have like relationships that maybe are a little more long-distance. I have a lot of close friends who are in college and will definitely share some stuff like over the phone through FaceTime or something like that, because I think it's still obviously very important to keep those connections, so...
And sometimes you can feel that connection, tension, perhaps sadness through those...
Yeah. Once you have a built-up relationship with someone, then it's definitely strong enough where like FaceTime is just as comforting as what you need in the moment.
There are, let me just check this, yeah, there are currently 34,000 people watching this.
Is that true?
No, that's not true.
There's three.
There's three, yeah. How many are there?
Three or four.
Three or four, yeah.
Yes.
To all the, you are the leaders of the community by fact that, A, you're here, B, you speak to what you feel is important, and C, you're seniors at the high school. To the elementary school students, perhaps even more importantly, to the junior high school students who have yet to endure the quote "heavy stuff" perhaps, what's your message to them?
I think my message to them is to find yourself in the midst of all of it, because there's a lot of peer pressure in middle school, especially I've, I feel like when I went through middle school, is to conform to what can make me feel happy through them or find my joy through them. But I think it's the most important thing is to find that confidence in yourself and find that trust in yourself, because that's who you're going to be with the rest of your life.
That's right.
You're not going to have all these people all the time, and I think once you're able to find who you are truly, what makes you happy, what makes you feel passionate about something, that's when you're able to have the most abundant relationships with others and the most truly relationships with others because you're genuinely yourself. And you just can't rely on others to make you happy. We've both been through it, and it's something that's natural. We're human beings, like we want to turn and have that attention from others, but my genuine advice is to find what makes you feel like yourself, and it's not going to be what makes you happy all the time, but what fills you up and finds yourself. For me, that's my faith. I found that definitely in high school, and that's what led me to find confidence and find people that make me feel better about myself instead of worse about myself. But I think definitely focus on yourself and what makes you feel good, but that doesn't mean always happy all the time. Like, look out for others, find people that build you up, that you can build them up in genuine relationships that aren't just for certain things, that you can be through the hard stuff and through the stuff that's fun. So yeah, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Beautiful answer.
Yeah, I totally agree. Yeah, just kind of going off what she was saying, finding, you know, the term "finding yourself" first, really Molly brought it up in a point earlier, just finding the things that you love to do and the things that make you happy and the things that just make you you. And I think a lot of times as junior hires and elementary schoolers and high schoolers and everyone always likes to kind of fit in the bubble of like, what's cool now, what should I be liking, what does this person like, and then I'm going to like that. And so I think it's so important to be able to find what you like and what makes you truly happy. And then from there, then you're able to kind of branch out and see what other people's interests are and then see, you know, the comparisons and that, and see like who you can reach out to and kind of, yeah. And so I think also another thing is just kind of like speak about your feelings, because I think a lot of times it's bottled in and you think no one else is feeling the same way as you. And I can, that's, I can totally attest to that, because I remember like Molly was saying earlier, like I would go to Molly and I'd say, "Oh, this happened to me, this happened to me, and it's really upsetting me." And she'd be like, "Actually, I also went through that, and we were able to bond over that." So I think kind of speaking out about your emotions can really, you can find community in that way too, so, so yeah.
And how long have you two known each other?
We actually went to elementary school together.
Oh, my Lord.
Yeah.
Which elementary school?
Heartland. It's the best one.
Ah, Dr. Die. Well, that's funny, because we have some Western Avenue kids speaking after you.
Oh.
No, we don't.
My aunt teaches at Western Avenue. She's probably the two visitors, or two viewers, my aunt and my uncle. Nope.
Next year, your plans. We talked about this earlier, but I think it's important to share with everybody what your thoughts are. I want to begin first with Lauren.
Yeah, I'm planning to go to college. I'm looking at Christianity-based colleges. I want to study elementary education and possibly youth ministry. Haven't really touched base there yet, but it's been an idea of mine, so, so yeah, I'm thinking maybe stay a little bit in the Midwest, hopefully, yeah, but that's kind of loose, so yeah. But Molly has very interesting plans.
No, I just plan to take it day by day. I'm definitely applying to colleges. I also want to study ministry. My goal is to be a missionary in some way, see if that is my lifestyle. I just really felt called with like volunteer work and that kind of thing. SAD Club is amazing opportunities for that and helped me find more of my passion through that, but I don't know.
Now Molly, you said to me, I swear, I heard the word "year."
Yeah, my parents aren't too happy with that, but we're still discussing. I think I, Lauren and I had the opportunity to go on a mission trip this past year and the year before that to Ecuador, and went to Calacolí, Ecuador, this little town, and got to really experience a new culture. I'm very passionate about cultures. I take two languages in high school, French and Spanish.
No kidding.
And it's just my passion.
Muy inteligente, sí?
Ah, muy bien.
Alder Person Bowring.
I'm Spanish one. Epi french.
Wait, you're in Spanish one?
Yes, but, but I'm further in French, pino french. Ah, très bien.
And just for those tuning in, Alder Person Bowring said, "Enjoy your gap year." And I believe Molly responded, "Don't tell my parents."
Yeah, but I think we're still working through that.
Of course.
I've talked to the people in Ecuador about an internship, possibly a gap year, but if that doesn't make the most sense for right now, I could, I might just intern for a few months and see what it's like, to see if that field is something that makes sense for my career.
Of course.
Or if not, because it's a big jump, it's a big thing to do, and yeah, it would be amazing to study there, but I know that wherever I end up, that's where God's placed me, so we'll see.
Last minute thoughts you want to share with all of us.
I just want to thank you all for listening to us and giving us such respect tonight. I just encourage you guys to talk to another, share your experiences with drug prevention and substance abuse and how you've been affected, because I will bet that most everyone has known someone who's affected or has been personally affected by the situation. It's not something that we should shy away from, because when we can talk about it is when we can build that strength and build that community to find a solution and find ways to move forward.
Yeah, for sure. Again, yeah, totally agree. She is amazing, so I just, you know. But we do have some pins for you guys to kind of remember our message and remind you guys just about Red Ribbon Week and how much that means to our community, so.
And then after you pass them, I'm going to, why don't we take the vote now? We have a motion by Casaroff, Alder Person Casaroff. We have a second by Alder Person Birthday Girl Bowring, and all in favor of proclaiming, I believe, forgive me, October 23rd through the 31st, which includes Halloween, as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Geneva, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Yes.
Well done. And then after you hand out your ribbons, I'd love to present this to you, and we can get a photo taken, and that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
We're looking forward to celebrating the week together.
That was the fastest passing out of stuff I've ever seen in my life. It was like, yeah. I'll come down to you ladies, if that's okay?
Ready?
So we have flip phones at the seat.
Sorry, those are all selfies. No objection if we post anything with your photos?
Yeah, all good.
Enjoy your gap year.
I think you have some extras.
Thank you again very much. Very nice. Thank you very much. Good to see you. Item 3B, folks, is the presentation and acceptance of the fiscal year 2024 Annual Compensation Financial Report, TIF 2 report, TIF 3 report, single audit, and IMRF allocation report. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Patchkey. We have a presentation. Correct? Yes, we do. Rita.
I will start off.
Our finance director, Rita Cruz, is with us, who has a guest as well. Ms. Cruz, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anthony Servini from Sickish CPA LLP is here tonight to present the fiscal year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Audit Results, TIF 2, TIF 3, Single Audit, and IMRF Allocation Reports. Before the presentation, I would like to draw your attention to the three major funds and their compliance with the financial policy. The General Fund, on April 30th, 2024, is at 52.7% of general fund expenditures compared to the policy of 25%. The Electric Fund cash balance is 115% of the total expenditures, but that is only due to the issuance of the $30 million alternate GL bonds. As of April 30th, the city only spent 10%, or about $3 million, of that $30 million bond issuance. The Water and Wastewater Funds' cash balance is 31% of total expenditures. Next is Mr. Servini to highlight the reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name's Anthony Servini. I'm here pinch-hitting for one of my fellow partners, Nick Baba, this evening, who is got baby number three on the way here pretty soon and is trying to, I think, cram in as many board meetings in the next two weeks as he possibly can on that. So appreciate you having me here this evening. I'll briefly cover just a few items for you from the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. If you do want to follow along, I'm starting on page 22 of your packet this evening. As was mentioned, there are several reports that were issued as part of this. The main document, the audited financial statements being encompassed in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Just like to call a few items to your attention within that report. The city does prepare an annual comprehensive financial report in the spirit of full disclosure, transparency, and accountability to your residents, your taxpayers, and any who may have invested interest in the city's financial position and changes in financial position. This is a document that goes above and beyond what you're required to present, both from a compiled statute standpoint here in Illinois, as well as under a generally accepted accounting principle standpoint. So do want to commend the city council staff for their efforts in preparing this document, again, doing that for the reasons I had outlined previously. Within the report, the introductory section on page 37 is the Government Finance Officers' Association, your GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I believe this is the 11th consecutive year that the city has received the GFOA certificate as part of this.
The main document, the audited financial statements being encompassed in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Just like to call a few items to your attention within that report. The city does prepare an annual comprehensive financial report in the spirit of full disclosure, transparency, and accountability to your residents, your taxpayers, and any who may have invested interest in the city's financial position and changes in financial position. This is a document that goes above and beyond what you're required to present, both from a compiled statute standpoint here in Illinois, as well as under a generally accepted accounting principle standpoint. So do want to commend the city council staff for their efforts in preparing this document. Again, doing that for the reasons I had outlined previously. Within the report, the introductory section on page, page 37 is the Government Finance Officers Association, your GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Believe this is the 11th consecutive year that the city has received the GFOA certificate as part of this. You also participate in the GFOA program related to your popular annual financial report, as well as your budget award as well. So we kind of have the trifecta in terms of awards that you receive in terms of your financial reporting, your budgeting process on that. So again, commend you for job well done on, on all facets of the financial reporting arena. Page 39 of your packet, you'll find the Independent Auditors Report. The Independent Auditors Report, the only two couple pages that you'll find within the report that you'll find on Sickish letterhead. Pleased to present to the Mayor and Council this evening that we've issued a clean, unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements as of and for your fiscal year ended April 30th, 2024. That clean, unmodified opinion is the highest assurance that we can provide as auditors. It means the financial statements in our opinion are fairly presented in accordance with those generally accepted accounting principles. Immediately following the Independent Auditors Report, packet page 44, you'll also find a separate report that we issue on generally accepted government auditing standards. This separate reporting is required for, for two reasons. One is, in the current year, you had federal expenditures greater than $750,000, which triggers what we call a single audit of federal expenditures. Also, based on state law, the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, or GADA, has also a $500,000 threshold there as well. So required to have that separate opinion there. Key takeaway here, we do compliance testing as part of that. No instances of non-compliance noted during our testing there. So again, clean reporting from the single audit and what we call the gagus opinion there as well. Overall, for fiscal year 2024, the city spent approximately 1.3, 1.34 million in total federal grant spending. The American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was your major program there, which constituted about 942,000, broken out into several different projects there, stormwater, your lead line replacement and water maintenance projects, as well as your facility improvements. Again, clean reporting on the single audit as well. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, would just like to, on behalf of our team, also hear from Sickish is Lauren Allen this evening, who's the manager on the city's engagement there. But a job well done to Rita and her team on this. Again, happy to answer any questions I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Allen, as well. To the dais, any questions regarding any of the reports referenced in item 3B? There were some questions posed earlier today. City Administrator and her team also provided said answers, but of course, the floor is open.
Are you going to go through the TIF separately?
I'm happy to, if you'd like me to, to review those.
No, I, I just had a question, maybe you can just answer the question.
Certainly try, yep.
Okay. On, on page 222 of the numbering that we have.
Sure.
Under, under deferred inflows of resources, unavailable property tax revenue, I would assume that's what we're going to be collecting after the, the counties collected their taxes in September. Is that, is that a projected number or?
So in terms of the specific amounts there, I can speak to the logistics of that, just the timing of the levies versus when they're reported there. In terms of the specific amounts, I don't know if you know the 303, if that's the expected amount there. It would likely be, you know.
It's referred to also as total deferred inflow of resources. Is that?
So it's more of a reporting mechanism, so.
Those are receipts that we currently have then?
Those are, those are not. So those are offset from the timing of the levy versus when their receipts come in for that. So the way property taxes are, are structured in the year and arrears in terms of the reporting from a levy standpoint versus when those funds come in there. So the deferred inflow of resources category is a category that GASB created probably about 10 years ago, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board there. So that would just, it's basically just a timing from a recognition standpoint as to how that gets presented on the TIF financial statements.
Okay. And then on page 223, under revenues, if you could explain, obviously, the property taxes collected then would be from properties in TIF 2 then, when it's.
Correct.
Okay. And then intergovernmental, would you explain that?
See, if you, if you, yep.
Okay. That intergovernmental revenue is from a $250,000 DECO grant we received last year and was related to some TIF 2 work and control, sorry, contractual work.
And then investment income would be the total amount of interest collected on the fund balance then, is that right?
Cash balance, yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else on any of the reports presented? We have a motion by Bowring, a second by Patchkey to accept all those reports as enumerated in item 3B. I kindly ask for a roll call vote when the clerk is ready.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative, one vacancy, item 3B has been accepted and approved by this city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Allen. Thank you. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this city council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Ooh, motion by Swanson, seconded by Casarag?
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, that was Bruno?
Yeah.
Forgive me. I know that must have hurt.
I know, really.
Motion by Swanson, seconded by Bruno. Whenever the clerk is ready, please take the roll.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, the bills have been approved for payment. We jump to item number nine, Committee of the Whole Items of Business, 9A. Approve ordinance 2024-37, amending Title 10 Building Regulations to adopt the 2021 additions of the International Building Code, Existing Building Code, Residential Code, Mechanical Code, Property Maintenance Code, Fuel Gas Code, Energy Conservation Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and Fire Code, the 2015 addition of the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code, the 2023 addition of the NFPA 70 National Code, and the Illinois Plumbing Code, and specify local amendments to said codes. Motion, motion by Patchkey, the second was, was it Mayor? This matter is on the floor. Ms. Dawkins.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I would also like to introduce item B as they're related.
Okay.
So on August 26th, 2024, a presentation was made to the Committee of the Whole, providing an overview of proposed amendments to Title 10 Building Regulations, updating the city's adopted building and fire codes, including local amendments thereto. The goals for this project were to comply with state mandated codes, ensure that the city's regulations are state of the art, provide more flexibility for existing and historic buildings, respond to constituent concerns, eliminate conflicts and outdated provisions, and limit local amendments. The proposed code adoptions and local amendments were filed with the Capital Development Board and city clerk and made available for public review on September 3rd, 2024. I would also note that this endeavor was a multi-year endeavor to do this, and it was also interdepartmental. So it involved the fire department, the community development department, planning and building, city administrator's office, city attorney's office. It was, I would call it a labor of love. So also with that, item B, together with the comprehensive update to the city's adopted building and fire codes, it is necessary to adopt an ordinance establishing building permit and plan review fees pertaining to Title 10. The schedule of fees to be established in a separate ordinance. The ordinance for your consideration satisfies this requirement and the schedule of fees that are established in that ordinance. So please also note that we did not, at this time, propose any changes to the schedule of fees. We've just created the ordinance to call them out as we are required to do when adopting all of the other codes. So with us this evening, we do have representatives from all of the departments that I mentioned. Director de Groot, I've put kind of as the lead guy, so if you have any specific questions, we'll make sure the appropriate staff member can answer those for you.
We'll be discussing for everyone's benefit item 9A first. Questions on 9A, Alderperson Marx? The floor is yours.
Stephanie, you may be able to answer the first question. Assuming we vote this in tonight, do we have a plan of when it'll go into, I mean, it won't go into effect tomorrow, right? I would imagine the trades need to be aware of what this changes. Are we giving like a 90-day?
Well, that, again, that's why the, by statute, we were required to file this and have it on file and have it available for the last, I think it was 30 days.
Yeah.
So, so they do go into effect immediately.
Would go into effect tomorrow?
And know that the building community has been, they've been waiting for this as well, I will tell you. There have been a number of projects that have come through and we're like, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. So I don't think it's going to be a shock to the system.
Okay. I, I just wondered, because you know.
In fact, I think there might be some sighs of relief.
Okay.
As mentioned, one, a couple of things that we are adopting, I mentioned last week during strategic planning, one is the environmental codes, the energy efficiency codes, and then also, I think very important to our community, are the existing building codes. We don't currently have the existing building codes. And what that means is that anytime you're doing work on a historic building, we treat it as new construction. By adopting the existing building codes, we now can treat it as it is, as an existing building, and then therefore it doesn't require nearly what would be required under new standards and under new construction.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? This is item 9A, folks.
This was fun reading, let me tell you.
Yeah, the, the motion alone required dramatic pauses. On 9A, we have a motion. We have a second. City clerk, please take the roll.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes. Item 9A has been approved. To 9B, information was presented by Ms. Dawkins to approve ordinance 2024-38, establishing building permit and plan review fees pertaining to Title 10 Business Regulations. What did I say? Oh, excuse me, building regulations, forgive me. Motion by Bowring?
Second.
Seconded by Patchkey. Questions? The floor is open. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Hilbert?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2024-38 has been approved by this council with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes. We jump to item 10, Presentations of Ordinances and Resolutions. Item 10A is to approve ordinance 2024-39, amending Title 11 Zoning Ordinance of the Geneva City Code, Section 11-7B-2, Permitted Uses, to expand the list of permitted uses in the I-1 Light Industrial District to include food manufacturing, processing, and packaging.
So moved.
Motion by Bowring, seconded by Marx. Ms. Dawkins?
Actually, I'm going to turn the floor over to Director de Groot to give a short presentation.
Director de Groot, do you want the, this light turned off? Are you good?
I'm okay as long as it's legible.
Probably not. We'll have, who knows how to work the light switches?
Who knows the password?
Look at that.
I think so. All right. Nope. Let's see.
Okay, thank you. I just want to provide a little bit of background on this request. The applicant is MSI Express. While they are considering a specific property in the I-1 district for this use, the proposed text amendment would allow it as permitted use throughout the I-1 district. So this map here shows you in purple all the I-1 zoned properties in the city. When MSI approached the city, we were a little surprised to find out that food manufacturing, processing, and packaging was not a permitted use in the I-1 district because MSI had previously been in Geneva off Pillsbury Drive, the building shown in red to the north. The space they're looking to lease is 1885 East State Street, the building in blue along Route 38 there. But also because we have a lot of existing food manufacturing, processing, and packaging uses in the I-1 district with General Mills, Northern Illinois Food Bank, Roquette, McPhona, and others. So as we did our research, we found that most of those uses are existing within the Geneva Business Park PUD, which made an exception to the I-1 district to allow for those uses. But nonetheless, those types of uses are prominent in the I-1 district, so we thought it might be good to consider it as a permitted use in the district. We looked at the I-2 district where it is allowed as a permitted use, and the I-2 district is almost obsolete. We only have three properties that are zoned I-2, and they are located off Edison Street, between North and Center Streets, and don't really consist of I-2 type of uses. We have attached residential on those properties, an auto repair shop, and some construction Again, looking at the, the I-1 district, some questions came up during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting regarding what types of uses we already have in the I-1 district. So I'm just going to kind of go through this by section and highlight the types of uses we have in the I-1 zoning district. Starting on the west side of town, we have auto services, demolition services, medical offices, truck repair. As we move east, get to Gary Lane, we have some attached residential there, contractor's office for concrete services, home builder, Burgess Norton, South Campus, Silvestri Suites or Carousel Candies, manufacturer, tech services, public storage, and other light manufacturing As we go to the small pocket of industrial behind Wheeler Park, we have a CrossFit facility, equipment manufacturer, precision manufacturing, printing, laminating services. As we go south on Batavia Avenue, we have the acoustic laboratories, which is part of a PUD that includes some residential components. We have lawyers' offices, financial advisors' offices, and other uses. Off of Glengarry Lane, we have battery manufacturer, doggy daycare, pest control, public storage, and other manufacturing uses. Then as we go to the Geneva Business Park, this is really where we have our food cluster of processing, packaging, and manufacturing. We also have food-related uses. Now, we've just approved the Bullock Campus, which is restaurant and equipment manufacturing. And then as we look to the south of all the industrial properties, we just annex and zone, those are obviously not developed yet, but could be similar type of uses to the uses we see in the I-1 district. There's some concerns about what types of nuisances this might create to neighboring properties. And I think it's important to highlight there are certain uses the zoning district just outright prohibits, and that's grain storage, packing plants, slaughter of animals or fowls, tanning, carrying of raw hides, processing of fish oil, manufacturing of tallow grease, lard or fat. In addition to those outright prohibitions, we also have performance standards for industrial uses regarding noise, odor, fire, smoke, and toxic matters. As part of this, we did reach out to our comp communities. We got 19 responses, and 13 out of those 19 do allow food manufacturing are both light and heavy industrial uses as a permitted use. There were five that allowed as a special use. And then Batavia has two different zoning districts. It's a permitted, permitted use in their general district, but not in the light industrial So that was just a little bit of background on the I-1 zoning district and kind of our thought process in guiding the applicant towards a text amendment to allow it as a permitted use. We see it as a strength that we have in our industrial district and something we and heavy industrial uses as a permitted use. There were five that allowed as a special use. And then Batavia has two different zoning districts. It's a permitted use in their general district, but not in the light industrial district. So that was just a little bit of background on the I-1 zoning district and kind of our thought process in guiding the applicant towards a text amendment to allow it as a permitted use. We see it as a strength that we have in our industrial district and something we can build off of. We do have representatives of MSI here if there's any specific questions to their use and their proposed location.
Thank you, Director DeGroot. From the dais, questions for either the director and/or our guests from MSI. Alder Person Kilburg, then Alder Person Bruno.
As it relates to food manufacturing, how would pet food be treated?
As manufacturing?
Would it be allowed, or?
I think it would be allowed.
It would be allowed?
Manufacturing or packaging?
Manufacturing, because usually manufacturing and packaging are at the same location.
I think we'd have to, we'd have to look at the use.
The only reason I bring it up is because there's a community in the suburbs that is going through issues as it relates to pet food manufacturing and packaging. And I just wondered if there should be a distinction that it should be for human consumption.
I guess I don't know enough about what the differences in that manufacturing process would be to, to require a special use or other consideration.
How would that be treated if we'd have an application then? Because we are opening up a little bit more here, and as interpretation of food manufacturing, I could see that people treat their pets sometimes better than their children. So I'm just, I'm just wondering how that would be processed if, and we've got, we've got a, a new menu, we have new facilities that are going to be developed over the next decade, and if it, in fact, someone wanted to pursue pet food, would that, I guess, are you saying that that's something that we'd look at at the time?
Is it, if it was complying with the other performance standards, I would consider that to be food, food manufacturing. If it violated any of our performance standards, I think we'd have to take a closer look at it.
So you said it would be permitted?
If you're, if you're asking me with like no real description of the use, I would say yes.
Yeah, I'm saying, pet food manufacturing.
It's food manufacturing.
Okay, that's food manufacturing. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Alder Person Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. So after watching PZC, it seems any concern with making this a permitted use in, in this district primarily comes from potential odors? Is that what I, is that what I got?
We did have concerns with odors and proximity to residential uses as part of the discussion.
So, yeah, because, yeah, I didn't see a problem with the physical act. We have, we have ordinances for odor and hazardous materials, they have to be in compliance. I'd be curious to know the depth and efficacy of those, if, if there's a smelly food product that starts wafting out. And I know we've got Fona, I haven't smelled Fona in quite a while. I don't know if they've changed something over there, or whether that's something we asked them to rectify. Is there a concern on staff's part that we, that we couldn't control odors that we got complaints about from any type of food manufacturing?
I don't think so, because the EPA has odor thresholds as well, and in the past, when we've had odor complaints, we've coordinated, we've filed our complaints with the EPA and coordinated those complaints with the EPA to investigate those odor complaints, because we don't really have this, the expertise to measure those odor thresholds ourselves in-house.
It seems a very complicated thing to...
But we do call that out in the, in our zoning ordinance, and it's reiterated by the EPA. And many of these manufacturing facilities also have air pollution permits that they have to renew on an annual basis and make sure that they have their odor controls in place.
And every time we've approached the EPA, I don't know, I can't imagine it happened a lot, but we've had satisfactory...
I think that the only experience I've really had dealing with the EPA was with complaints about Fona many, many years ago, and they've since upgraded a lot of their equipment, and I don't think we've had the same issues.
That probably explains why I haven't smelled them.
We had a few, an issue a few years ago, I think, with Burgess Norton North, and we didn't have to get the EPA involved because they, they responded very quickly.
Yeah, that was pretty awful.
Yes.
That's it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the dais for either the director and/or the applicant? Alder Person Swanson?
If we were to continue with this being a special use, is the process to obtain a special use particularly onerous to an applicant?
I, I think it depends on the situation. If they're looking to go into built space, they just have to demonstrate compliance with the nine special use standards, you know, regarding impact on the character of the area, neighboring properties, traffic. But if they're going to a new site where they have to invest a lot of money in developing the plans for the building, the engineering for the site, that's much more onerous and risky.
Because I see the, the map you had up there before of all the I-1 locations, a lot of the area, the I-1 locations that are east of Kirk Road are literally across the street from residential. And so I, I see if we were to approve this, we're taking away the right of residents to show opposition or ask questions or come to meetings that are meant to approve a special use. It would be kind of by right if we were to approve this amendment. So I, I kind of like what Batavia did, because I see the, the east area a little more distinct than the areas that are surrounded by residential. So I, I guess if, if the ability for a company to still obtain a special use exists, I, I'm not sure that we need to just make it a permitted, permitted use. So I, I would, I would agree with what the PZC recommended and that we continue that it would be a special use. Thank you.
I believe next was Alder Person Bowery, then Alder Person Ruby.
I certainly appreciate the comments from Alder Person Swanson. However, my perspective is a little different. I think that in most of the areas that are, on the east side in particular, that are adjacent to residential, we're already allowing or have already through a special permit or PUD allowed food manufacturing to take place. So to me, this makes sense because what we're doing is we're saying, rather than needing to get a variance to use this the way many others are using it, we're going to say this seems like a very common use for our industrial space and one that we've not experienced significant issues with, and one that we have regulatory controls already in place to help make sure that it does not become a problem. So I, I think that this makes sense, and I feel like staff has presented a really clear reasoning, at least for me, for why it makes sense to allow this as a permitted use so that we're not asking each potential industrial user to come in and make their process more onerous when it seems like it's something that we're already basically allowing wherever anyone has asked for it. And again, with regulatory oversight possibilities and without, it sounds like, significant issues. So I, I am inclined to support this as originally presented, rather than requiring this to be a, a special use. Thank you.
Alder Person Ruby.
I, well... I just wanted to clarify one thing that...
Not yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Until everyone else has spoken. Respectfully, thank you.
I'm okay with...
The floor is yours.
Okay, I'm okay with letting Bob comment, make a comment.
Floor is yours, Alder Person Ruby. We'll get back to Mr. Swanson.
All right. Thank you. All right, so I, I just agree that it's in our best interest, the east side residents' best interest in particular, is who I have heard from, to look at each thing on a case-by-case basis. It's not like we're going to have 100 companies coming to us to try to jump through hoops for a, a special zoning variance. I think it makes more sense to, to look at these on a case-by-case basis. And as far as the regulatory oversight goes, we have one code enforcement officer for the entire city of Geneva, and being non-home rule, we're very limited in what we can do. Another example, just down the street from us in St. Charles, that Smithfield plant, they went through, honestly, I, I don't remember what the end result was, but it was multiple extended periods of time with an atrocious odor coming from that plant, and it was rectified, but it took several months, and then it came back, and then it was fixed again. So, as is, we have a lot more ability to avoid that type of situation, and that's all, that's all I'm asking for, is just to continue, not make a blanket change to our zoning, but to look at things individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Mayor, then Pashke, is that correct? Then Casarog?
Yeah, so I listened to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I thought that in absence of the option to go to a special use, they would have approved this in any I think that when we talk about how to stimulate the vacancy, vacancy rate and help business thrive in Geneva, that this is one of those options that we can pull the lever on and help people who own property get tenants in the door and keep them. When tenants are looking at spaces, they are deterred when they have to go through special permitting processes and appear before boards for approvals. I don't think that we have very many problems in any of our food processing industrial uses, and I think they're some of our best taxpayers in the, in the area. So I'm, I'm supportive of this, and I think, I think staff has done a really good job at, at showing us that we're on par with many communities, very similar to ourselves. Thank you.
Alder Person Pashke, then Casarog?
Thank you. I would agree with Alder Person Bowery that I think it is important to encourage economic development. I appreciated Alder Person Bowery's comment about the, the fact that that's already a common use in that area, and appreciate staff's presentation and sharing the various controls that we have and the things that are in place to protect from what I heard was a lot of speculation and fear in the discussion with PZC, which I also watched. I feel like we do have solid performance standards, EPA odor thresholds can be enforced, doesn't sound like we've had issues working with them before. And can you remind me again what the standard was regarding meat packing and processing? Because isn't Smithfield meat? Isn't that a meat processing?
We don't, we don't allow the slaughter of animals.
No, stockyards or slaughter.
Or packing plants.
So they're probably not doing slaughtering there.
Or packing plants.
Oh, or packing. Isn't that, isn't that what Smithfield is? I thought that was meat.
I think so.
Yeah? Okay. So I do understand concerns, but from what I can tell, I think staff has made a very reasonable and solid recommendation, and I'm in favor of supporting it. Thank you.
Alder Person Casarog?
I guess I was wondering if you, David, if you could explain what happens to MSI's application if we turn this down? Or if we allow, make it, sorry, make it a permitted use?
If, if you make it a permitted use, we can move into...
Sorry, I meant the other way.
Special use?
Yes.
If it becomes a special use, that would be effective upon passing of the ordinance tonight, so they could apply for that special use tomorrow. But they would need to bring that back forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing on that request, and then back to the city council. So you're probably looking at moving quickly, getting back to the city council in December with that process?
I, I'm in agreement that we should allow this as a permitted use. I don't know if I need to repeat everything that's said, but I feel like, you know, it's just really a fear of the unknown, but I think when you look at the empirical evidence here, we've had few cases, we have a ton of uses already in town with no problems. Yes, you hear, and, you know, there exist exceptions that other communities are dealing with, but it sounds like there's controls in place to do that, and so I, I'm all for incentivizing these type of businesses to come to our I-1, and, and that's where I'm at on it. Thank you.
Before I recognize Alder Person Swanson a second time, anyone who has not yet spoken wishes to do so. Alder Person Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, sir.
Alder Person Bowery, I, I think, pointed out that I was mixing up my east and west comments, and, and my concern really is the small industrial areas that exist in the older parts of town, which would be the west side, that are literally across the street. And we had, David, you provided a very nice map of what is in those locations, but if we approve this tonight, those locations could change tomorrow, and they would be a permitted use without any input from the neighbors. And, and I, I see that as, as an important process for the neighbors of those industrial uses to go through. So, and, and as you pointed out here with, with MSI, we're, we are literally looking at a two-month delay in approving this, but we are reserving the right to make all futures, future proposals, a permitted use that would require a process. So, so I still feel that it's important that we honor the process, so the neighbors that are across the street have some say in what could go in there, as opposed to just changing it by right right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Bowery for a second time, unless someone else has not yet spoken a first time wishes to do so. Alder Person Bowery?
So I, I appreciate the clarification from Alder Person Swanson. The area he's talking about, at least part of it is, well, at least some of it is very close to where I live, and I can attest to having smelled at various times odors. It's wonderful for me to learn, as I do so often on city council, about what is allowed, what's not allowed, what steps to take. I have found, I have found it generally not to be a problem to be a, pretty adjacent to, within two blocks of light industrial. And I guess I have to say, yeah, I, I feel pretty confident knowing the controls that we have in place and, and what the options are if an issue should arise. But I guess I would also say that a lot of those areas are fairly old industrial uses, fairly established, and my guess is that if new uses went in, there would be a lot of upgrading to what was there. So my thinking is actually, and I may not represent everyone in my neighborhood, but my thinking is it might actually improve noises or smells or other conditions if new users came in, because they would be, I think, expected to bring various things up to a much more recent code, very new codes, in fact. Anyway, so I, I, but anyway, I, I appreciate understanding what Alder Person Swanson was trying to convey, and for me, that, that's, that's not a reason not to approve this. Thank you very much.
We have a motion. Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Yes, sir. Alder Person Casarog for a second time, unless anyone wishes to speak.
This is a procedural question.
Yes, sir.
So how do, it's written in a positive without...
A vote for what, yes, a vote for what is written in the motion is a vote to support MSI's occupation of that building.
As a permitted use.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, yeah, throughout the I-1 district.
So there's no motion necessary to address the recommendation?
No.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Not at all.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion by, forgive me, Bowery, a second by Marks. City Clerk will take the role, a simple majority is required.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Casarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
With six of... With six affirmative votes, three nay votes, the City Council has approved ordinance 2024-39. We jump to item 10B as in void. Approved Resolution 2024-95, restating and extending the site plan approval granted for the construction of a mixed-use building at 609 South Third Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marks makes the motion. Mayor makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, the floor is yours.
Okay. So in August of 2020, the City Council approved Resolution 202061, which granted site plan approval for a mixed-use building consisting of 60 residential apartment units, 6,014 square feet of commercial space, and 63 off-street parking spaces at 609 South Third. The Geneva zoning ordinance allows site plan approval to be effective for one year unless a building permit has been issued and construction has commenced. The site plan approval granted by Resolution 202061 has been restated and extended on three separate occasions. The owner has submitted a fourth request to restate the previous approval and extend the deadline to obtain building permits and begin construction by another year. Again, with us, we have Director DeGroot, and I'm not sure is the applicant here as well? And then we have a representative also for the applicant.
From the dais, questions for the Director DeGroot and/or the applicant. The floor is open. Alder Person Swanson, then Alder Person Kocarog?
Thank you. I guess this is for the applicant, given that this is now the fourth iteration of doing this. I was really excited about the project in 2020. And then in 2021, COVID happened and, and an extension was requested. And then in 2022, another request was made due to supply chain issues. And then in 2023, a request was made that there were multiple contracts entered into, and the buyer wanted an extension and was having trouble getting financing. And then here we are in 2025. In fact, in 2023, I believe, the, the plan was to break ground in 2024. So now we're in 2024, and I don't think ground is going to be broken. And we seem to be exactly where we were four years ago. So what has changed? What is the current plan? And when will ground be broken? Or what, what's going to happen in 2025?
I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure ground will not be broken in 2024.
Sir, I'm going to interrupt you respectfully and ask you to introduce yourself to the council.
I'm Brian Zetsz on behalf of the owner of the property.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're not going to, nobody's breaking ground in 2024. I can't imagine. If they do, I'd be grateful. However, I did, we do have an email from the purchaser's attorney, which I don't think you have. I didn't print out 10 of them. I apologize if you would like. I can read it to you if you prefer.
If you wish to distribute that, we kindly ask that you do so to the city attorney. Or to the clerk, excuse me, to my right. Forgive me.
I didn't bring it up for everybody. But it's between the purchaser's counsel, the two councils, and the buyer's counsel. And it says, yeah, I've spoken to my client. There are no proposed changes to the zoning that are being sought by the purchaser. And the permits should be, should just be extended as is. The purchase development does comply with current zoning. D, D-CM, commercial mixed use. The project only requires site plan review, which does not require a public hearing. Therefore, we, they request all permits be renewed. They're right in the middle right now. We've had the property appraised. They're in the middle of trying, they're in the middle of getting financing, literally. And they, we're thinking about going to contract. I mean, we're, we have an option. We're moving into the contract phase. They have put up, they put up option money, and they've put up two extensions. You don't put money up if you don't want to do the deal.
Is this the same buyer that existed the past couple of years as well?
No, not the, I don't know if it's been two years, but it's been, it's only been a year, this buyer that we've been dealing with. I've only been listing the property for you, and I apologize for that. I'm asking you, I, I'm a broker. Nobody puts up money unless they think they're going to do a deal. You know, it's, it's, it's a sizable sum of money. That's, that's why we would like it. If you, if you could help us, we would, you know, you want the development? I don't see how you're going to get a development done any faster than if you let us try and close. And if, if it doesn't happen and you need to, and someone else doesn't do it, and they come in, they're going to have to file for a change anyways. But if you give it to us, that's the fastest avenue to get that site developed. And that's what we'd like to do for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Person Kocarog?
I think you may have answered that, but I don't know what the email is you just gave to...
Mike Griffin?
I don't know what the email is you just gave to the clerk, but the email that was included in our packets said something about signing or please ask them, please ask the City Council to reconsider this?
Yes.
Is that the same email that...
We're asked, yeah, that's the same email. We're asking, we're, assume it is. I just cut out the part just where the attorney sent.
I guess, you know, I don't know. I'm getting frustrated too, to be honest, after all these years. I, I just, I don't know. I don't know what the harm is in doing it, but at the same time, I feel like, I don't know. We need to, we need to either get it done or move on. And I, I'm, just as you were talking, answering Alderman Swanson's question here. I mean, I'm having deja vu. I think you used the exact same terms a year ago. And I mean this with all respect, but I, I don't know. I guess what I'm considering more to throw out to the council is, should we put maybe six months on it or a smaller time? Certainly, we want to let you close whatever you might have going right now. But I would think within six months or three months, we would know what's going on. I don't know. I'm just trying to throw ideas out here because I kind of feel like it's time to move on. And I just want to share that. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. Undecided.
Alder Person Mayor, then Alder Person Bowring. Then Alder Person Kilburg?
Thank you. So I'm going to try to make an effort here to convince everybody to just vote to support this. We had COVID. We had material problems. Now we have high interest rates. If the interest rates drop, there's very likelihood that this project will move forward. It was a good project in 2020. It's a good project now. The site plan is a good asset for this company to be able to move this project forward. And we all want to have the project move forward. It's a, it's a good site for housing. It's a good site for a little bit of retail and commercial. And I think the plan, I wasn't on the council when this was approved, but I've said each year that we've approved it, that council did a good job in the plan review. Planning and zoning did a good job in the plan review. So there is absolutely no harm. It is not our property. We don't have to make any decisions regarding this. We just have to say, still a good plan and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Bowring? Alder Person Kilburg?
So I won't belabor it. I concur with Alder Person Mayor. I don't see that there's a harm to extending this. I'm not sure what the, like, general rationale is for these things to only have the year span within which to work because it seems like when things arise, and many different things arise in the process of getting from an idea to something built. It seems like if it was a good plan, which in my opinion it was and is, then if we can do anything to facilitate that plan coming to fruition, then I think that's in the best interest of the city. And I think, in fact, from my perspective, the harm would be presenting an obstacle to this transaction actually taking place. If our goal is, you know, having something productive, getting to a higher and better use on this site, I think this gets us there. So I also think that the best course of action is for us to extend this and then, you know, cross our fingers and hope that both parties can come to an agreement and, and, and things can move forward. I, I guess I don't, I don't understand what the benefit is to the city, how it advances the project for us to take away site plan approval. So, so I'm not undecided, and I guess I don't see the, the other side. Thank you.
Alder Person Kilburg?
Maybe you could tell us a little bit about White Deer?
I don't know White Deer as a...
I mean, aren't they, aren't they the party that you're working with?
That is, all right. That is the owner. I don't refer to him as White Deer. I refer to...
Well, the correspondence we received referenced White Deer.
Right. White Deer would be the corporation that owns. I don't think about it as White Deer. I think about it as...
Okay, who do, who do you think about it as?
I think about it as Juan, Juan Jose Crespo. He's the owner, he's the owner of White Deer. I don't think about it as, White Deer is the entity that was set up to, to run this. What would you like to know?
So just tell me a little bit about the discussions and where you're at in the process and what have been the holdups and why you think this is so viable right now?
White Deer is selling the property to somebody. The party that's buying it is in, is, has put up substantial five figures of money. They cannot get back. They had already, you know, they extended it and kept putting more money up within the last two months. So I don't, from a, from a business standpoint, people generally, and I said it before, do not throw good money after bad money. Okay? In addition, many people have asked about the property. But the ownership of White Deer, while taking offers or listening to people, has stuck with this buyer because this buyer's going to get the deal done the fastest. White Deer would like to sell the property and move on. This is their fastest, and it gets the job done and gives you what you, what you would ask for initially.
So I guess if we're not interested in having timelines on approvals, maybe we should just give you a two-year approval tonight, and that way you don't have to come back next year. Would you be in favor of that?
You, you, I, I don't want to be, I mean, I would love it, but, you know, but I, I'm not asking for that.
But you'd take it if we gave it to you?
Of course I would. I mean, I, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be, I mean, yes.
No, I'm just asking an honest question. I'm saying, so if you've got six years...
Right. Not, whatever it is, you know, whatever it is. But we're, we're not trying to be unreasonable.
No, I'm not either. I'm just saying, we'd like to see it developed, but we'd like to know about when.
And getting financing is, is, is a incredible problem today. And I, you know, so first of all, we had to find someone who could buy it. Second of all, we had to find someone who could develop the project, which the numbers are real tight. And getting someone to be able to finance it, who they're working on and they think they've got it. The person who, their buyer, they wouldn't have put up all the money to buy it if they didn't think they were going to get the financing. I, I wouldn't do it. I don't think you would throw your money away on that basis.
No, no. So if you're that positive, then I would make an amendment that we give you a two-year extension tonight. I know you're not asking for it, but that way it'll give you two years to, to get this closed and, and the project commence, commencing.
My statement would be, if you want to do that, that's great. But I am, I'm a person who believes in pigs get fat, hogs get slaughtered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would there be a second to my amendment?
The amendment dies for lack of a second.
Thank you.
It's okay. I don't, I, you know, I don't want to be here twice every...
Alder Person Bruno has the floor.
Thank you. I recall the same discussions as Alder Person Kocarog and with some frustration and understood what was going on. And I, I think I might have even myself expressed interest in, and this is the last time, but this, this still does appear to be the most expeditious way and the, in the closest, lowest-hanging fruit to, to get this property developed. So I'm, I'm generally in favor of extending this for a year. Thanks.
Anyone else in the dais? We have a motion, and we have a second. On item 10B, simple majority is required to advance and approve this request. City Clerk, please take the role.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kocarog?
Aye.
With six votes in the affirmative, three votes in the negative, item 10B, Resolution 2024-95, has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 10C, approve ordinance 2024-40, granting, one, a comprehensive plan amendment from parking to single-family residential; two, a zoning map amendment from residential-scale commercial mixed-use district to the R1 low-density, single-family residential district; and three, amendments to the Fourth Street Parking Lot PUD and the Harrington Trail PUD. Motion by Bowring?
Second.
Second by Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the subject property, known as Parcel 2, is located west of Crescent Place in Fourth Street intersection. Parcel 2 is a portion of the 1.52-acre city-owned property that was known as the Fourth Street Parking Lot PUD. And due to the sloping topography and location in a floodplain, the majority of the western half of the PUD was not developed. As you may recall, you had previously approved Resolution 2024-08 declaring Parcels 1 and 2 of this PUD as surplus real estate and authorized the sale of both parcels and entered into sales agreements for the two parcels. Couple, about a month or so ago, you approved changes to Parcel 1, and now we're talking about only Parcel 2. And as stated in the motion, the purchaser has proposed to purchase Parcel 2 and combine it with their property at 520 Creekside Drive. And in order to do so, they need all of those amendments that the mayor read. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, on September 12, 2024, unanimously recommended approval. And with us this evening, we do have Director DeGroot, and I believe we also have the applicant, Ms. Goodenough.
Questions on the dais for Director DeGroot and/or the applicant, Ms. Goodenough? We have a motion on the floor. We have a second to that motion. City Clerk, please take the role. Excuse me.
Just getting ready to vote.
Oh. On item 10C, ladies and gentlemen.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pachke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With nine votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, ordinance 2024-40 has been approved. Item 10D, approve Resolution 2024-96, authorizing city administrator to execute agreement related to the waterworks and sewage operating, excuse me, systems revenue bonds, IEP A water main replacement.
So moved.
Motion by Kilburg, seconded by Marks. Ms. Dawkins?
So again, for E's, I am going to give the introduction for both items D and E because they are similar, just different projects. So the city is seeking financial assistance from the IEP A in the form of a loan for the water main replacement and leadwater lines and the sanitary sewer river crossing project. So the first one is the water main and the leadwater lines. The second item on the agenda is for the sanitary sewer river crossing. The city retains bond counsel to assist in compliance matters related to debt issuances. The IEP A also requires that we have bond counsel's opinion for these issuances. Chapman and Cutler has been the city's bond counsel for over 20 years, and they have provided us with excellent service and promptness on any issues that may arrive. So with us this evening, if you have specific questions, we do have Director Cruz and also Superintendent Van Gescam with us in the audience.
Questions on the dais for either Director Cruz or Superintendent Van Gescam. This is on item 10D. No questions being sensed. City Clerk, please take the roll on 10D.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-96 has been approved with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes. Item 10E, related thereto, is resolution 2024-97, authorizing the city administrator to execute agreement related to the waterworks and sewage revenue bonds, I E P A sanitary sewer river crossing. Is there a motion? Pashke makes the motion. Bowring makes the second. Again, a summary was provided by City Administrator Dawkins. Are there questions for either the city administrator, Mr. Van Gescam, or anybody else who wishes to answer them? None? City Clerk? Oh, Alderperson Mayor.
Uh, when do we think this project's going to start and get moving?
If we obtain the I E P A loan and, and the bidding would take place fall of '25.
And then start work in spring of '26?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? On item 10E, City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-97 has been approved with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes on this city council. Item 10F is to approve resolution 2024-98, authorizing execution of an amendment to the professional services agreement with Fairgram in the amount of $65,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $965,000 for sanitary sewer river crossing and screening, building, design services.
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so in 2022, the city entered into a professional services agreement with Fairgram for the design of a new sanitary sewer river crossing and screening building. Fairgram is requesting an amendment to the contract due to unanticipated hours required for the design and permitting of the project. A memorandum was included in your packet that explained the unanticipated hours. There were also a couple of questions asked earlier today that were posted on the website. So the costs associated with the amendment can be accommodated within the existing budget and if necessary, reflected in a future budget amendment. We do have with us this evening, again, Superintendent Van Gescam and then also representatives from Fairgram. We have Chris Da Silva and Andrew Barbo.
Questions on the dais for either Chris or Andrew or Superintendent Van Gescam? Oops, excuse me, I didn't have a microphone on. Alderperson Kilburg, questions for either the professionals from Fairgram or David?
Maybe Fairgram. Maybe could explain some of these changes that constitute the additional 65,000 you're going to require. Uh, I know that it had something to do with the koi pond. Is that, is that it?
Yeah, so I'd say there were a number of things that... The largest portion of additional effort was, was related to permitting the river crossing with the Army Corps. So in order to put in the new sewer, we essentially have to dam up the Fox River using a cofferdam, very similar with the railroad has been doing. And that effectively required a lot of additional modeling and bathymetric survey. We basically had to go into the river and collect cross-sections to accurately model the river. And so that, that was a lot of anticipated effort that we were hoping to use the Army Corps' existing model, which was insufficient to prove to the Army Corps that it wasn't going to be an environmental issue. So I'd say that was probably the largest portion of additional effort. So then the, there are two pieces of infrastructure in the area of the project that have created some historical questions. The first is a, a koi pond in the northwest corner of the property that has a nice historic story to it and it's, it's a, you know, a pond that is not necessarily part of the treatment process in any way. But effectively, originally, we, we had the river crossing going through that koi pond and we're going to need to either get rid of it or move it as needed. And so we looked at the history of it and talked to the State Historic Preservation Office about it. And originally, there were no major concerns with getting, moving the koi pond for the sake of environmental improvement. During the design process, we actually moved the river crossing further south, 20, 30 feet or so, not substantially, but enough to basically improve the hydraulics and constructability of the area. It is a very tight corner of the property and so we were worried about some of the heavy machinery that would be needed, as well as the screening building will require a dump truck to pick up screenings. And so we were trying to improve the access of a dump truck to that area, whereas right now it's a tight turn with basically single-truck access. So it was related to working with the staff to improve the constructibility, hydraulics, and access to that. So there is also an original plant building from the early 1900s. It's there. It's currently abandoned and not used. We originally talked to Historic Preservation Office that documented it all a couple of years ago when we were doing the planning study. They didn't see it as a concern. As permitting has progressed with the Army Corps, they have said, "We would like a professional archaeologist to come in and, and do a phase-one study." So that, that was a specific quest that we did not anticipate that is included in here as well. I'd say those are kind of the main, main challenges in general. It's, it's been a, mostly related to permitting challenges that you, you think the Army Corps would be on the city's side to try and improve the river, but they, they like their rules. So that's how I'd summarize it in a nutshell.
And I don't know if this was made clear, but the original purpose was to relocate the koi pond? Relocate the koi pond? Not just get rid of it, so.
And then, somewhat unrelated, but the timing of this project as it relates to the possibility of dam removal, was that discussed or considered in your engineering study?
Yeah, so as part of the negotiations with the Army Corps, there's a limitation on when the actual damming can be done to basically not, not happen during any sensitive ecological seasons. So the idea would be to do it in off-season, you know, with the, I forget what month it is. And, and it's important to remember, like, important, this, this whole project involves a lot of infrastructure. The actual river damming is probably one to two months long. So we basically agreed that the contractor would be able to do it in off-season, whether it's in the winter or, or the drought season.
And then the project would be undertaken in what year then? Next year?
So if we can get all the final permitting approved with the Army Corps and then loan funding from the I E P A...
It could be as soon as next year.
Yeah, so the plan would be bid next summer would be the nearest loan funding cycle that we'd be able to bid. So that would be starting in July. And then, depending on the bidding and the contracting, the project would hopefully be awarded, you know, in the fall. And then the actual river crossing, again, is a kind of a small window of the whole project. But we would hopefully be awarded by end of next year.
So in essence, construction probably in '26 if you're being realistic.
The heavy construction, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make a note of that.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thank you. You gave a nice explanation.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by, timeout. Bruno and a second by Bowring. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-98 has been approved with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes. 10G, approve resolution 2024-99, declaring certain public works, vehicles, and equipment as surplus.
Second.
Pashke makes the motion and Kassarag makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so city council previously approved the purchase of two new single-axle dump trucks with wing plows. And after a short waiting period of just four years, the new vehicles have been received and are in service. The replaced vehicles can now be declared surplus. We've also included two mowers that are used downtown in the S S A and new mowers have been purchased and are also in service. So again, this would be retiring the old mowers. And if you have any additional questions, we do have Director Babica with us. He would be more than happy to answer those.
Also on the surplus, this is Director Babica's minivan. Questions for Director Babica regarding the real preparation of surplus vehicles? City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes by this council, resolution 2024-99 has been approved. 10H, approve resolution 2024-100, authorizing approval of change order number one with Geneva Construction Company of Aurora, Illinois in the amount of $289,214 for a revised contract value of $2,705,970.19 for the fiscal year '25 street infrastructure project.
So moved.
Bowring makes the motion. Marx makes the second. City Administrator Dawkins, the floor is yours.
Okay, so the city council approved resolution 2024-69 that authorized the execution of a contract with Geneva Construction in the amount of $2,416,985.05 to complete the 2024 street and infrastructure project. During the course of the project, both unknown and unforeseen conditions have resulted in the need for a change order to increase the funding to account for additional work. Some of the conditions include the need to remove road fabric on East Side Drive resulting in additional pavement removal and replacement, the replacement of a 72-inch storm sewer vault, 10-inch sidewalk replacement at fire station number one, a concrete pavement patch on Illinois Route 38, and a parkway tree relocation. As stated, the additional funding request is for $289,214 for a new contract value of $2,705,970.19. The change order may be accommodated within the overall budget. And again, I think if you have any specific questions, feel free to ask Director Babica.
Questions for Director Babica? Alderperson Kilburg?
Yeah, Rich, uh, tell me a little bit, was, was that on East Side Drive, this, this fabric issue? Or was that in Westfield?
East Side Drive.
East Side Drive. Well, we haven't done any excavation there yet. So, I mean...
It, it was found when they were removing the curb.
Okay.
That the fabric is at two and, two and a half inches. And it was not known when we took the core samples. I reviewed the core samples today with the city engineer. And if you look under a very tight magnification, you can actually see that there is the road fabric there. It was, it was not known. It was not in our records when it, when it was installed. So it came up as a bit of a surprise.
So that would impede the scarifying that you need to do before you put down the new blacktop, right? Is, does that complicate the, the, the removal of the surface then?
Yes, it complicates the removal.
Gets tied up in their equipment or what, this fabric?
No, what it, what it does is it, it would leave about 3/4 of an inch of old material on top of the fabric between the surface cores, on top of the binder level. And that small amount of surface, it would scab off fairly quickly and have a very weak bond of the new surface to the old binder level. So under, the, the best method is to remove it all the way down to the binder level, hence the change order request.
So, but 10 years ago, they were all, all the TV commercials were promoting, putting down this fabric to extend, uh, blacktop life. Is that a misconception because there's a consequence later?
Well, no, it's, it's still used.
Okay.
It, it's, it provides a reflective crack control. So it, it keeps the cracks from propagating from the binder level in this upgrade up through the surface.
So there will be fiber that will be incorporated with this then?
No, this project does not include fiber. That was something we had talked about two years ago, I believe. This is just removing the binder level, uh, removing to the binder level with a fresh surface.
Okay. And as it relates to the project itself, how are we progressing and when do? I've been asked when it, when the conclusion or when, when it'll wrap up?
Well, I've, I've been asked, actually, I haven't been asked. I've been tasked by both the city engineer and the civil engineer on this project that here regardless of when the city council makes this decision tonight, to let them know because literally the crews are waiting to start work tomorrow morning on this project.
On the blacktop?
Yes.
Okay. So you're thinking then by the end of the month possibly this could be completed?
Well, the 15-day forecast is pretty lucrative for construction projects.
They've had great weather.
Yeah. I agree.
So, thanks, Rich.
My pleasure.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Bowring and a second by Marx on item 10H. The city clerk will please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-100 has been approved with nine affirmative votes and zero, no votes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 10I, approve resolution 2024-101, authorizing license agreement with Geneva Masonic Temple Association for the continuation of the Lincoln Highway interpretive mural project. So moved. Motion by Marx. Ooh, who was that second?
It's me.
Alderperson Mayor. Ms. Dawkins, try to mash that enthusiasm.
Okay. Well, in 2010, the city entered into a 15-year license agreement with the Geneva Masonic Temple Association, the owners of 10 South Second Street. The license agreement facilitated the display of a Lincoln Highway interpretive mural. As the parties desire the mural to remain in place, a new license agreement is prepared to extend the display for an additional 10 years to 2035. The Lincoln Highway Association encourages the continued display of murals in celebration of the Lincoln Highway. The mural program continues to be an economic driver for tourism in Illinois. With us this evening, we have Director Timoshenko. And is there a representative from the building owner? No, okay. So, but Director Timoshenko has been working with the building owner and so this is a mutual ask from both the city and the Masonic Temple.
From the dais, are there any questions for Kathleen Timoshenko, our Director of Economic Development? City Clerk? Where are you? Kindly take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
On 10I, resolution 2024-101, the council has voted with nine in the affirmative and zero in the negative. The resolution has passed. Item 10J, approve ordinance 2024-41, scheduling ordinance for proposed amendment number one to the East State Street Tax Increment Financing District, TIF II, eligibility report, and redevelopment plan and project.
Still moved.
Motion by Bowring?
Second.
Second by Pashke? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So as you may recall, in December 2023, with the support of the taxing districts and the Illinois General Assembly, the East State Street Tax Increment Financing District, commonly referred to as TIF II, was extended 12 years to December 31, 2026. Pursuant to the TIF Act, the extension requires an amendment to the original TIF plan to permit the goals, objectives, and strategies to continue to December 31, 2036 and to increase the budget for estimated redevelopment costs. Such amendment requires certain notices and a meeting of the Joint Review Board and a public hearing at city council. So the ordinance for your consideration this evening sets that date for the Joint Review Board and the public hearing. And again, we have Director Timoshenko if you have any additional questions.
Questions on the dais for the director regarding item 10J. Seeing none and sensing none, the motion by Bowring and Pashke will be voted upon as the city clerk takes the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
a public hearing at City Council. So the ordinance for your consideration this evening sets that date for the Joint Review Board and the public hearing. And again, we have Director Timoshenko if you have any additional questions.
Questions on the dais for the Director regarding item ten J. Seeing none and sensing none, the motion by Bowery and Pashke will be voted upon as the City Clerk takes the roll.
Bowery?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative and one in the negative, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash forty-one has been approved by this council. We jump to item eleven, folks, public comment. We invite anyone joining us this evening who wishes to share with the council any thoughts. Now is your chance to do so. It is also your chance to speak. It is our chance to listen. The floor is open. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel, staff. There was a, it was called tacos and tequila event at Northwestern Field on September twenty-first. And I noted some concerns from that festival that I wanted to share with you. Now, you know, and, and I do know that this is unincorporated. We are surrounded, you know, the city is on the periphery of our neighborhood. There are some concerns I had though that I think the city could, you might be interested in knowing about. And I'm going to also be sharing this with the Forest Preserve tomorrow at their meeting and with the County Board, but your meeting was first, so here I am. So since we depend, and, and that's another reason I think that it's pertinent for you folks to hear about, we do depend on Geneva for emergency services in this area. So, and also, we had, we had this tuner car show event on Saturday, I think it was. I don't know if any of you heard about that or heard it perhaps. Luckily, I was out of town. I was in Boston all week, so I was not here for this, but I spoke with my neighbors, and things didn't go, excuse me, didn't go really well apparently. So at this event on the twenty-first, there were people that were dropped off on the north side of the railroad tracks in Geneva. That would be Geneva property there. And they proceeded across the railroad tracks in violation of federal law, crossing railroad tracks, to walk up Old Kirk Road and then access the event off Cherry Lane, crossing Kirk Road. Pretty good numbers of people coming through the neighborhood. During the event, Kirk Road was backed up from thirty-eight to Fabian, all four lanes There were ambulances that tried to get in there. They had quite a time getting in, and I shudder to think if we had needed a fire call in our neighborhood or an ambulance in our neighborhood, there is absolutely no access because of the way the traffic was. Now, I find it interesting because whenever there's a ballgame, what do we have, fifteen thousand people at a ballgame? We never have this issue. They seem to handle things well during that period. I would say the sheriffs are there, the sheriffs are controlling the lights at Cherry Lane, helping traffic to move. I, I don't know if they send people into the proper lanes, but it stays, there, there is always an open lane during ballgames. It was pretty bad. There's no doubt about it. Yeah, ambulances couldn't get in, people were parking illegally in our neighborhood. It is posted by, you know, Mr. Jaeger has it posted, but that didn't stop people. Groups of people walking through the neighborhood, urinating in front yards, a lot of that went People were coming in so that they didn't, you know, if they were northbound on Kirk, and it was all backed up, as I said, they would cut in on Old Kirk, go north on Old Kirk, up to Cherry Lane to cut across to get straight into the ball field that way. So we had lots of traffic. It was, it was, it was pretty wild, I must tell you. There were dozens and dozens of people hanging out on the corner of Cherry Lane and Kirk Road to see the end of the concert when it was over. And of course, all the people who accessed the venue by going across the tracks because they were dropped off on the Geneva side also had to cross those tracks going back. Probably not in the same condition they were in when they went across either, I would imagine. I did speak with personnel who were on duty at this event, and it was described to me as chaotic over there. The Cougars' general manager's been contacted, disavowed any involvement or any, any fault by saying that the permit's up to the county, and he has nothing that he can do about it. You know, I just, I, I feel that there, there does, there does need to be a police presence there, which we didn't have. And, you know, as people make their way back across those tracks, and now here it is, public record that it's happening, you know, God forbid if something happens. I, I really hope that doesn't. So after tomorrow's meetings that I'll have with these other groups, you know, everyone will be aware of it, so any contact that any of you could have with some of these people perhaps, because now we have another tuner car show scheduled for November, and of course, these are not car shows like we would think of, you know, at the courthouse in Geneva on Thursdays. I don't know if any of you, any of you went by it and saw what goes on, but it's crazy. It's, there's smoke, they're, they're drifting in the parking lot. It was a real zoo. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll turn to new business by members of the council. The floor is open. Anyone wish to share anything for the benefit of the council and the community? Now is your chance. How about a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
Still moved.
Motion, that's a tough one. Who gets it? Casarod gets it?
Yeah.
Kind of feel bad for him, don't you? So Casarod gets the motion. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Will be just a moment, folks, and we will host the committee of the whole meeting.
Three proposals with Semper Fi Land Inc. determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. If you have specific questions on that, we do have Director Babica with us in the seat. Any questions? All right, voice vote is sufficient. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, item three B, consider draft resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing repair to hidestrel pump at wastewater treatment plant by LAI Limited in the amount of thirty-one-thousand-eighty-seven dollars sixty-five cents. And do you have any, Administrator Dawkins?
Sure. So the return activated sludge pump station consists of three hydrostall submersible pumps, one of which has failed. A new motor and repairing of the pump are required to return it to service. We received a quote from the factory authorized service facility LAI Limited, whom the city has worked within the past. Costs associated with repairs can be accommodated within the existing budget and, if necessary, would be reflected in a future budget amendment, but again, only if necessary. And we do have Superintendent Van Gescam with us to answer any questions about the pump.
All right. Any pump questions?
Not about fixing it or anything. There was a note on your memo that said, I think it was seventy-seven percent of the new pump?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, that just kind of popped out at me as, why aren't we exercising?
Normally, we would go ahead at, at that percentage and just buy a new pump. However, this pump is, is only four years old, and the majority of the, the pump is, you know, the casing and everything else, there's really no need to go with a new pump. So that's why we went ahead with the, with the repairs instead. At this point, I'd rather save the nine thousand dollars.
Okay. It's not, what's like the warranty on these things for, for?
It'll, it'll be a one-year warranty from the time of install.
Okay.
So, on the repair.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item three C, consider draft resolution authorizing development economic incentive agreement between City of Geneva and Benedo Servello LLC for two-hundred South Third and three-ten Campbell Street in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Bowery. Okay.
So the McFadden family are the owners of three-ten Campbell and two-hundred South Third. They have completed a series of improvements in excess of five-hundred thousand dollars to create new tenant suites, modernized interiors, and improve life safety. The next phase of work includes the removal of the connector between the buildings and restoration of the front door and threshold. Over time, the use of the building has changed, and the removal of the connector will advance the goal of eliminating nonhistoric features on historic buildings, as advocated by the National Park Services and the Geneva Historic Preservation Commission. In keeping with prior determinations for expenditures of the American Rescue Plan Act funds set aside for historic preservation and adaptive reuse, a grant award for fifty-two thousand dollars is recommended. This amount is eighty percent of the estimated improvements planned for the next phase of work and is approximately nine percent of total project cost, including this planned phase. With us tonight, we do have Director Timoshenko. Anybody here on behalf of, okay, thank you. And we do also have, I assume, one of the McFaddens?
Yes.
Okay, with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Any questions from the dais? I'm sure he would love to get out of that chair. He's been sitting there for a long time. All right, voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, item four, public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Don't all stand up at once. Don't rush the podium. Okay, and any new business from the dais? Dean?
Yes, congratulations to the Geneva football team on breaking a thirteen-game losing streak to Batavia, and their high ranking and the fact that the mayor has been able to secure a, a fight song, I believe, by Mr. Stevens from WLS, and I was wondering when that will take place.
It's, it's to be determined. In fact, Ramblin' Ray invited not only himself to sing that fight song, but also has extended the invitation of perhaps the Geneva Choir. So I'm starting, I'm going to start working with the schools, but yes, that was a big victory because if we would have lost, I had to wash council members' cars in Batavia. So we'd have to hook up the water to Saint Charles to do that.
I was telling Mayor that Sports Illustrated has rated the Geneva-Batavia, friends of mine from college sent this to me today, the Geneva-Batavia rivalry as the third-best high school rivalry in the country. It's been in place for a hundred and thirteen years, and we are currently leading that rivalry. So I thought that was a pretty neat, I got, my buddies from Washington DC called me up and he said, hey, man, I just saw this, and I thought, wow, so.
Just so I can add some clarification, I sat next to Coach Jerry Oxter during the game, and Jerry said, what's the big deal, thirteen losses? He says, we beat Batavia nineteen years in a row back in the eighties. He says, so, you know, this is, this is the Ebb and Flow High School football, and, you know, the neat thing about it was, is you've probably had fifteen-hundred Geneva residents,